I order the meeting of the Tacoma Public School Board's study session for February 21st, 2019. And first thing we're going to do is please all rise for the flag salute. Where's the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the infinite justus. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
I am going to, first of all, welcome you and good evening and thank you for coming out to our meeting tonight where we decided to come out into the community and listen to what you had to say about our potential issues regarding our budget right now. And we want to thank all of you for taking time to care enough about our kids to be here tonight. So what we're going to do is tonight, we're going to look ahead and start talking to the community about what we want the budget to look like next year and this year. The current reality right now that we're facing is a $30 million loss of revenue due next school year because of the dramatic changes in the state's funding formula for education. The funding formula did not treat all school districts fairly, and this is an issue that the legislature, if you're following what's going on in the newspaper, is constantly on the front page about how they're going to deal with this throughout the rest of the state. And dealing with this funding, loss of funding, is going to require some very difficult decisions. And to help us with that, we really want to engage a wide cross-section of our community in conversations around the programs and the services that we provide and what the people in our community value most. We will have more of these work-study sessions in other locations. We're going to try to be out throughout all the rest of the city. And we will look for announcements on our website and our social media accounts for the dates and places. In addition, we're asking citizens to, 25 to 40 citizens, to sign up for our Spring Budget Advisory Committee, and this is parents, staff, and students, and citizens at large here in the community. We, as a school board, represent some 225,000 people, and that includes people who don't have children in school, who are the ones who most likely in our district wind up voting for all of our levies and things that we most valuable, are very valuable to us being able to do what we do. We do have a budget survey on the website, so you can tell us what things you value most. We are working with our very supportive local legislators to change the funding formula and to restore our lost funding. It came as quite a surprise to us, quite frankly. So thank you for being here tonight to help us get these conversations started. At our work-study sessions, we normally don't take public comment, but tonight, that's all we're going to do. We're going to take your comment, and I'm going to ask you to hold your comments to two minutes. Mrs. Santorno has a list, I believe, or do we have some more?
We're going to start with the budget information.
Oh, I'm sorry. I messed up. Thank you. We're going to start with a, well, I was going to get, well, okay, we'll do that. We're going to start with the budget information packet, but what I would like to do is to give you the, where we're going to be when we begin to take public comment. We're going to limit public comment to two minutes, and we would ask you to have your remarks, be respectful and civil, and keep on the subject, and give us your best guess on what you would like to see us do. But first, I would want to, I'd like to have Superintendent Santorno and our Chief Financial Officer, Rosalind Medina, to provide a brief status update on where we currently stand with our budget projections, so that you can see from the basin which we're starting from.
And I'll turn it over to you, Rosalind.
Good evening. My name is Rosalind Medina, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Tacoma Public Schools. My intent this evening is to just provide you with a brief background information and give you some initial indications of where we're at in our process and in our planning. The first thing that I would like to do is celebrate Tacoma's success. We have seen a graduation rate increase of 34% since 2010. And while we're excited and happy about this, we know that the work still needs to continue. And so when we work on our budgets, this is the focus with which we make all of our decisions. We're working to ensure that student achievement can maintain and progress as it has in the past. This is not progressing here. Okay. So where does our funding come from for the school district? This graph represents 100% of our budget, which is about $466 million. And what you'll see here is that 75% of it, or $353 million, comes from state resources. And that's called our basic education apportionment. That's generally driven by the enrollment that we have in the district, and there's a lot of factors that weigh into that. We also have approximately 13% of our budget that is funded through local levy taxes, representing roughly $60 million. That's what we budgeted. Our actual amount is actually a little more for the current year. Federal dollars, we receive about 8% of our revenues in federal dollars. That would be for special education, high-poverty students, English-language learners, career and technical. There's a variety of things that happen in that. And then there's two tiny little boxes off to the right that have nothing in them, and those represent approximately 3% of our revenues for other activities: food sales, donations, grants, things of that nature, but a very small portion. When we look at the revenue as far as enrollment is concerned, projected K-12 district enrollment for the next year will be 27,863 full-time equivalent students. And so we actually have closer to 30,000 students if we add in our preschool and maybe students that are continuing on after the regular 12th grade cycle. But what we get funded for is based off of our K-12. If we look at our last 10 years of enrollment, we've only increased in 10 years 75 students, and they fluctuated depending on the grade bracket. But what we have seen is very steady enrollment. And year after year, we have not had growth like some other districts may have seen, but we're maintaining, and that's great news for us. What we are seeing over the next 10 years is a potential enrollment growth of approximately 857 students. It's not a considerable growth for us, but represents about 3% increase. So where does our funding go? If this graph represents 100%, this graph does represent 100% of our budget, you'll see that the first three boxes on the left-hand side are really salary-driven activities. Our certificated or teacher salaries are $207.5 million that we've budgeted. Our benefit and payroll taxes between both our certificated and our classified group are $105 million roughly, and our classified salaries are $75 million. Our total salaries budgeted for this current year were 83% of our budget. So it's a lot of responsibility, the staffing that we provide, because it requires so much of our dollars to be drawn to it. 10% of our resources are spent on contractual services, and those are things like transportation, software licensing, security SROs that we utilize through the City of Tacoma, and things of that nature. Additionally, about 6% of our budget is for supplies and materials: books, paper, paper towels, cleaning supplies, those sorts of items. And we have about 1/2 of 1% that is dedicated to either large equipment or travel. It's a very small amount of money. So those are the primary things that we spend our resources on. As I indicated, our staff is the primary thing that we fund in the district, so investing in people is an important process for us. We want to attract and retain the most viable people in the city. We are the fifth-largest employer in Tacoma, according to the City of Tacoma website that I looked at today, and that represents 3,695 full-time equivalents. And we actually employ more than that. We have hourly employees and substitutes and athletic coaches that represent additional staff, but we're currently looking at about 5,229 people that we employ in Tacoma School So what drives our 19-20 deficit? As Director Viall mentioned, we have legislative impacts. We are going to be seeing a revenue loss that's upcoming of about $29.9 or $30 million. Those are driven by two things, which I'll discuss on a couple of slides following, which is levy and hold harmless. But we also have internal costs to the district, our natural cost increases. And those are generally made up of people moving up the salary schedule. That's a natural process. It happens every year. We call it incrementing. They go from one step to the next. We also have cost inflation increases. Utilities go up, gas goes up, just like your home budget would. And we have laws that change. Our minimum wage law here in Tacoma, it went from $12 to $12.35 this year. And our Paid Family Medical Leave Act was a law that was passed by the state last year, and we have to pay on behalf of our employees for taxes. We also have negotiated salary changes. Every year, we negotiate with various bargaining groups. I think we have 11 groups, and we have to negotiate with each one of those groups. And so we'll see that we have salary increases based on our negotiations every year. And finally, we have other legislative requirements that have cost impacts to them. An example of that is that the state is currently working on legislation. There's an opportunity for the state to fund benefits on behalf of the school employees. Currently, we offer benefits through our own sound partnership, which is a trust that's run by the district, but this would be the state taking over those responsibilities mostly. We won't have the full costs covered by the state, and so there'll be local impacts that may occur from something like that. So going back up to the revenue losses, I would like to just guide you through what that looks like. As I said, our current budget is $466 million, and what we're seeing for the 19-20 year is that that's going to decline to $437 million, which is the $29.9 million decline, partially because of the levy and partially because of hold harmless. Our levy was changed in 2017, and the law requires that districts will either take the lesser of $1.50 per thousand of your home value or $2,500 per student. Tacoma qualifies for the $1.50. That's the lower-cost option for the district, and so we're limited to that threshold. Now, our voters approved a levy that was $70 million for the 2019 year at a 64% approval rating in February of 2018. What we, excuse me, what we see happen is if we look at 2017-18, we were able to collect levy plus our local effort assistance, which is a property-poor subsidy for school districts, so that you have a lower tax rate in high-poverty areas. We were able to collect $97 million in 2017-18. In the 2018-19 year, we'll be able to collect around $66 million. And then when we move into the 2019, 20, excuse me, 2019-2020 year, we will only be able to collect $43 million, even though our voter-approved amount is at $70 million. That orange box that you see there represents the hold harmless. Last year, we went to the legislator and said, hey, we need to fix our issue. We're losing too much of our levy dollars. Please don't leave us in a situation where we're going to have to lose money and make cuts. And they responded to us with a one-time hold harmless allocation of $12 million. Those dollars expire at the end of this year and will no longer be available to us. And that continues to drive part of our deficit. As Director Viall mentioned, there is a considerable inequity in the levy structure that's been set up. The two-tiered system of either the $1.50 or the $2,500 per student puts districts in a situation where they don't have the ability to collect as much per student as some other districts. Here in Tacoma, our levy will only generate around $1,300 per student. And while we have a 58% free and reduced lunch rate, which is an indicator of significant poverty in a district, our Lake Washington and Issaquah and Seattle school districts are able to collect over $2,000 per student. It would be the opinion of, I believe, the school board, that our students aren't worth any less than the Lake Washington students, and that that recreates the inequity with which we're struggling to have the state correct. So switching gears a little, what would be next for us? As Director Viall indicated, we're interested in engaging the public. We want to hear what the public has to say about our budget and where we're struggling, where we want to see things change. We will embark upon a budgeting-by-priorities process. We have been doing this process since the 2014-15 year, and it is a process that is working to align the resources that we have with our strategic plan and making sure that we're spending money on outcomes. We ask budget writers to submit a budget proposal that says what their outcomes will be and what the resources are that they're going to use to accomplish that, and I think that that has helped drive the conversation towards student achievement in our budgeting. We're also going to continue to follow legislative happenings. Without understanding what the legislative implications are, we can't provide you with specifics around what might be impacted with our budget, because frankly, we can't identify necessarily what those will be until we have that information. So we'll continue to see what happens with the levy in the legislature. We do know that there are a number of bills that we're following, and we do know that our legislative delegation is working to solve our issues. We'll also continue to have strong financial management. This is not our first time going through difficult times. We had the fiscal crisis a few years ago, and we had to make reductions at that point in time. So we are prepared. We do understand that this is a very difficult time, and it's, there are difficult decisions to make. But we do have a AA II credit rating, which if you were to compare that to your own personal credit rating, you would be in the high 700s of your credit rating, let's say. And finally, we will work to balance our budget. A balanced budget is actually required in this state, and so we will be required to submit that. We have been working on interacting with our public, and we've done a few things over the last several months. We've done some surveying. We've asked for emails to be sent to us telling us what things we thought were important to us. And we've also, as Director Viall indicated, have started a Budget Advisory Committee, which is a citizens' group that we would like to invite you to participate in. We will also be doing another one of these study sessions in March, and there will be hearings and the budget adoption that will be upcoming, that you'll have an opportunity to participate in the budgeting process then as well. For the Budget Advisory Committee, out on our district website, there's this little blue box on the homepage that you can click, or there's the Survey Monkey link attached here. You can go in and you can apply to participate on this committee. We expect that it will be four meetings and roughly 10 hours of commitment. This slide represents our budget survey, so in addition to the Budget Advisory Committee, we also have the budget survey. This is also on our homepage in the district webpage. You can go out and click on the survey. You can also take the survey out in our lobby here. Last slide is we're ready to hear from you. So I thank you for your time.
Superintendent Santorno, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes. So what we do, I'll try to announce two names at a time, and if you just kind of line up. And we have, we don't have our electronic timing device, so we're going to use our Tanya Timing Device. So she's over here, and she'll let you know. We're asking everybody to limit their comments to about two minutes, and so she'll let you know when you've done about half of that and then when you're finished. So thanks a lot. I want to make sure that I again say how much we appreciate you coming out and speaking to your ideas. First speaker is Sally Perkins, and the second speaker is J.R. Nobles.
Before you speak, you'll get a, you have two minutes to speak, and we have a timer, and Tanya will give you a notice when your one minute is up and you have one minute left, so that you'll know where you are. So it's our normal procedure, so thank you.
My name is Sally Perkins. I'm speaking tonight as an individual. I have two questions about the budget reduction process. For the round that you just completed, was there a disparate impact analysis done about the staff people whose positions were eliminated? I ask because I know that the district has important goals for a diverse workforce, and at least two of the people whose positions were eliminated were high-ranking people of color. It will be important to track the cumulative disparate impact on the diversity of the district's workforce if additional reductions need to be made in this round. Also, in the previous round, what reductions were made in financial support for community partners? These reductions might have happened at the district level, or they might have happened at the building level, in terms of building-level support for such things as staff, materials, food, transportation. Is there a combined list of the reductions affecting community organizations? Again, here, the district has important goals for reducing academic gaps for students of color and lower-income students, and your community partners are demonstrably reaching those priority students in support of reducing academic gaps. And again, here, any future reductions should be included on a comprehensive list that shows the impacts to community partners. Both for disparate impact in staffing and for impact on community partners, comprehensive lists would allow you to see the patterns in the reductions, which could help prevent unintentional harm to some of your most important goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
J.R. Nobles is up next, to be followed by Jacqueline Fuller.
Good evening. I'm J.R. Nobles. I'm the Director of the Tacoma South Puget Sound Math Engineering Science Achievement Program, but tonight, I am here representing some nearly 270 community partners that make up the Graduate Tacoma Movement, which is a collaborative effort with Tacoma Public Schools to improve student outcomes. I want to say two things tonight. First, I want to thank Tacoma Public Schools and also any other community partners that might be here for your commitment to partnership on behalf of our students, both in and out of school time. And then secondarily, I want to let Superintendent Santorno and all the other district officials know that the community stands with you in this time while you're making these difficult and responding to these complex conditions. The community partners stand with you. We want you to know that we will lean in and support you in this time to ensure that the continuum of support for our students is not disrupted and that our students don't suffer as a result of these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nobles. Jacqueline Fuller, followed by Tony Gomez.
Hi. My name is Jacqueline Fuller, and I just, I'm here as a parent, and I used to work for the school district, and now I am working for the City of Tacoma. I had four children that graduated Tacoma, and they were wonderful kids and well-prepared, so thank you very much. And I have three grandchildren and three more coming along, so you guys will be everywhere. And as a teacher and as a parent, I see two things that were really helpful for my students and that you guys provided, and hopefully, it will continue. The first was the class size, the lower class size, and the more attention in the lower-grade levels, if there was any way I know. And then second, with the high school and beyond plan that my students, my personal students have filled out, they had a lot of opportunities for internships and extra education. And for the City of Tacoma, I run, I help run the internship program for the Environmental Services, where I've, and right now, I have six of your high school students working in the Environmental Services with our engineers, with our surveyors, with our chemists and stuff, and they're learning a lot, and I love that program. And we are also in the Environmental Services, creating a program for the summer, the CTE Certificate Program, like the CNA Program. We're creating a certificate program for the Environmental Services, and I think these programs really help out, because as I said, as a personal, you know, my personal experiences with my own children and as a teacher, I see these things are very valuable. And I know you guys have a budget crunch, and I'm willing to help you any way I can. I don't know, as an individual, you know, I'm just here as a parent and a former employee, and I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Tony Gomez, followed by Rashan, I think it's Rashana Ware.
Hi. My name is Tony Gomez. I'm Education Manager at Tacoma Arts Live, formerly the Broadway Center for Performing Arts. And we are here also in support of the work that you are doing as the leadership of the district. We want to thank Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia and the Board for your leadership in this difficult time, and to remind you that, as it was mentioned earlier, the 270 organizations that are part of Graduate Tacoma are standing with the district to find innovative solutions for the challenges that we're facing. And to that degree, particularly in the area of serving the whole child and expanded learning opportunities, we are very hopeful about the arrival of Tacoma Creates and want to thank the district for its collaboration with the city and with arts nonprofits like ourselves to make that a reality and see that as one area of support that will arrive in this next school year. In the meantime, we're working to do what we can to build capacity to support the incredible growth of programs that are serving the Whole Child Initiative in particular and extended learning at a number of sites across the district. And as a fun kind of side note, I will share with the Communications Office, our Ballet Foccaldico dancers from First Creek and Lincoln are just back from Olympia, where they met with state senators and House representatives to, from a very personal point of view, advocate for the levy equalization bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Rashana Ware.
Hello. I work for the City of Tacoma in Environmental Services. I have one of your interns had them today. And I also work at Bates Technical College as the Aerospace Program Navigator, and I'm here as an individual, but I represent a diverse background of information. So I wanted to share with you all that the career technical education is extremely important. I sit on the Board, the Advisory Board for Engineering, and they're saying we can't get enough talent to bridge that gap of those retirees that are leaving us, and we need new talent to train sooner. So the internship program that Next Move provides gives us an opportunity to know what students are learning, and also gives a student the opportunity to fuse what they're learning and learn a little bit more on the actual site that they could be working in the next couple of years. So I would encourage you to consider beefing up and trying with all that you can to consider keeping the career technical education as a primary focus, because I have seen it translate into, oh, okay, into jobs and into careers, and I am an advocate to make sure that does not stop for the next couple of years, so our students continue to get the opportunities that some students in the past have received. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. There are no other cards that have been turned in. Okay. I want to then close our public comment period and want to thank all of you who are here this evening, and thank you for the comments, and we will, we take them to heart. And I think that, do we have any comments from members of the Board? Hearing none. Oh, Andrea, I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to echo the thanks that you've already shared with the folks who are here for people coming out tonight. I know it still feels probably like it's early in the process, and we have a lot of information to still learn from what happens in the legislature.
Okay, I can do that.
But just hearing from those of you who are able to speak and who are here, what some of your priorities are early, I think helps us continue to have these conversations and think through the decisions in the long run. So just want to echo the thanks.
Thank you. Before we move more comments, since we didn't have that many people wishing to comment, is there anyone out here that didn't sign a card who would like to comment? Okay, then we will continue on with Board comments. Director Hines.
Thank you. I just appreciate you all coming out, and it's so important for us to have this respectful dialogue, so the tone to me is greatly appreciated. I think as we work through this, none of this is going to be easy work, but it's important work, and so thank you for sharing your thoughts and perspectives in a respectful way. And to those in the viewing audience, please do take advantage of the other opportunities to provide your input. I can guarantee you that that will factor significantly into the decisions that this Board is going to have to make in the upcoming months. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your willingness to roll up your sleeves and be a part of the solution.
Okay. I would like to also echo, it makes this job, and it's, this job is not going to be an easy job for any of us, and some of us have been through it before in other positions in city government and state government, that when we all come together tonight in the tone that was expressed here, it's going to make it not easier, but it's going to make it more effective as we all work together in partnership, and it has been one of the primary goals of this school district since I've been on the Board. And I am also a graduate of Tacoma Public Schools, and I believe Director Cobb and I are the only two who are, actually. She's a Lincoln Abbot and I'm a Wilson Ram, so, but we love Mount Tacoma. Yeah, that's okay. So, yeah, go Rams, go T-Birds, and all of our wonderful high schools. That it makes, it makes it not easier, but it makes it a process that is respectful and that you all understand that this is not going to be, unless we get help from the legislature, this isn't going to be an easy process, and we're going to need input from everyone in the community. So I want to again, thank you for taking time out of busy schedules to be here tonight and do, this is the first time that I'm aware that we have actually gone out since I've been on the school board in round two, where we have gone out and sought public input on the input on the budget, and I am very pleased that you came this evening. Thank you.
Can I have a comment?
Yes.
So, thank you for your advocacy for technical education and the arts we...all of us believe up here want to give that extra special attention as time goes forward. I do want to just make sure, we already asked for other people to give comments. Director Viall did that, but there's some students here. I thought maybe just more encouragement that we'd love to hear from students. So, is it okay to ask the students in the back to give any comments that there are things that are important to them, just to make sure that...and second chance, students? Yeah, any student?
Good. Come on down. Give us your name and tell us where you go to school.
Hi. My name is Gabriel Foster. I'm a senior at Lincoln High School, and I just want to say I appreciate all you guys are doing. My mom's part of the district as well. She's head of safety and security, and I'm just really optimistic, and I'm really grateful for you guys to be, you know, a part of my career in terms of education and a bunch of other stuff that's really helped me. And so, you know, a lot of people on the surface, you know, don't recognize you guys for all the hard work you guys put in, but you guys are under the surface, and you guys are...I know this budget thing is really complicated, and as long as we all can adapt and adjust, you know, I'm pretty sure we can find some common ground with it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments very much. Thank you. Is there someone else? Okay. If there are no other Board comments, then I think we will adjourn our meeting, and again, thank you all for coming out, and thank you for caring so much about our kids.